For all who want to welcome out from here if you've joined us and for those who are watching online and want to join. Follow along with tonight's agenda can be found on our website at forumschools.com. Click the Board tab and then under Meetings and then tonight's agenda will be there. Can I get a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
Okay.
Got a motion by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
A second by Mr. Johnson. All in discussion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. Alright, can y'all please stand with me as we give the pledge of allegiance. Come on, Mr. Rex, Craig, Ray, Lee, send them away.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, can I get a motion for tonight's consent agenda, for a verbal tonight's consent agenda?
Still move.
Got a motion by Mr. Bennett.
Second.
A second by Mr. Brown, any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. Alright, moving on, there is no public comment. So we will move right on to student advisor committee. Alright, we'll ask, we'll ask Mr. Colin Tunderock to come up and he's going to share with you about, you've got a copy of his report in the packet that he'll share with you, what's, what you need to know. Colin?
Alright, so the band will be hosting the Tree City Marching Festival side road in nine bands and over seven hundred musicians, which is the largest in thirty years. The choir has been selected over four main listening candlelight presentation at Edco in December. The college students debuted their food truck, they served rolled ice cream and earned one hundred fifty dollars in fair prize winnings. The JROTC Raider team has placed first and second in competition so far and will compete at the Raider Nationals in October. And the Beta Club has earned five national titles this summer. And the Book Club is collaborating with the Poetry Club. Climate Committee raised two hundred and fifty for retired teacher gifts. The D and D Club will have, has thirty-five to forty-five weekly participants in hopes to take the Renaissance Festival. The SCC LA is preparing for their upcoming conferences. COSA is playing elections, competitions, and a blood draft. NHS is coordinating fall service projects. And the Theater Club is preparing for their Pioneer Shorts play on November first. And then basketball players will be excelling both academically with a team GPA of three point four and athletically with several athletes earning offers in state recognition. The cross country has recently competed in Cookeville and will host her Tree City Invitationals at WTHS this weekend. The girls soccer will be hosting senior night September twenty-fifth at six o'clock versus Y County. And the Pioneer Anglers competed at Kentucky, Kentucky Lake and preparing for their tournaments at Watts Bar. They will also assist in the twenty twenty-six Bass Master Classic and Non-Still. And student advisor committee, students appreciate improvements like cafeteria water, traffic flow, and better yardage house lines that request vending machines adjustments and a closet courtyard. Thank you.
I do want to say, Colin, don't run off there, man, questions. But I do want to say that I do appreciate food service. At last month's meeting, they talked about the water bottles being the small bottles and food service made that adjustment. Get some better water bottles. So I do want to say your committee matters when you call our attention to it before we're taking, taking that into account. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. Any questions from the board? Oh, they made it easy on Colin. Alright, thank you, Colin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to recognitions. Alright, yes sir, happy to announce our employee of the month. Our certified employee of the month is Ms. Sarah Walters from Eastside Elementary. She's got a good fan club here tonight, so glad to have her. And so actually, Ms. Walters was nominated by three different folks. And so I'm going to read what they had to say and then we'll get you up here and get you to get your picture made. So the first nomination is from Jamie Hodges. Jackson has learned so much in only one month. His writing and accounting has improved. And when I asked him who he thought deserved teacher or staff of the month, he did not hesitate to say Ms. Sarah. Lindsay Grissom said she puts her heart into teaching and loves her students. My child loves having her for her first year of school. She communicates with parents well and always has a positive attitude. We love her. And Haley Sutton said Wayland and I think Ms. Sarah should get employee of the month because she goes out of her way anytime Wayland and I, or Wayland or I need help. Wayland said she should get it because she teaches really good and he thinks the world of her. Anytime I need something or want to know how Wayland is do, what, how Wayland is doing, she either messages me or lets me know in person. For example, on grandparents' day, I went, I went instead of his nana and he did not want me to leave. I was worried, but she instantly put a picture on Parents' Wear of all the kids letting us know they were fun and not sad. And so just these three stories are one of many that could be told about our teachers, but we are so happy to be able to recognize Ms. Sarah Walters as our certified employee of the month. Her principal and central principal are here today, so we'll let them come up and get their picture. So that's all for recognitions. Again, we'll say to the audience, if you feel free to come and go as needed, you're welcome to stay the whole time. But often times after the recognition, a lot of people want to leave. So item number seven are school spotlights and I'm not sure that that's in your package, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure what happened there, so we'll get that taken care of. Number eight is facilities and resources, so we'll ask David to come on up and talk to us about his update.
How you helping? This month's update on construction, I'll start with the west basement project. We now have all of the approvals, spots checked, and a PO has been requested. We're just waiting for that to, to come back. As soon as we get that back, we, we'll get started. Actually, the contractor contacted me today, wanted to know where we was at, very ready to go. So that's where we're at on that. We put some bid specs out on the access road around Morrison School for the baby. There've been several contractors contacting me about that. That, that bid is supposed to open September thirtieth, so once we get that open, we'll, we'll get that going. Also, at, at Morrison, we received some quotes for a fencing project to secure the property around the, there's been some concerns around the playground areas and, and we're willing to sort of walk that off to try to separate that from the public entrance and everything. So we're going, we're going to get that fence up. We, we did, those quotes that we got, we did send that through and everything was approved. We got a PO and I, I contacted the contractor and he's working on getting material so, so we can get that done. The sports lighting is still on hold for now. We're starting to get things together slowly for the CTE building. Tracy and I are working together trying to get some, some things lined out so that we can get started on that. So maybe we'll get started on that pretty soon so we can get, we can get going on that. And I know that, that's, that's what a lot of people's buying, wanting to get that going, wanting to get it started. We've got big lookouts for it. That's all I have, if there are any questions.
David, once they start in the basement at West Elementary, I know you can't give a definite, but about how long do you think it'll take to complete?
Of course, you know, they'll, they'll take a month, two months or whatever, but I would suspect maybe six months. That would be my guess. A lot of the material was already there and from where they started that back earlier. And then we had to change it to go with fire hazard issues and that, but a lot of the material's still there.
Thank you.
It's not something you just mentioned, I was wondering, I know I'm sure you're aware of the issues with the bathrooms on each side. Wonder if there's anything upcoming or any kind of, kind of fixes on the horizon or is this something that's going to be prepared?
Actually, actually that'll be in my strategic plan here.
Okay, I saw it in there as well, I'm sure, yes.
I've, I'll just go ahead and tell you what my plan is. It is, I was going to get with our mechanical engineer, our plumbing engineer. And what the problem is, is where those bathrooms are. That sewer line that's under the floor, it goes right straight out the back and it goes out to the playground where the, the sewer plant is. And that, we think we're pretty confident that that line is collapsed underneath that slab. So we'll probably have to cut that out and put a new line in there. And when I do all that, I want to upgrade all of that, the fixtures and everything and try to dress that up a little bit. That's, that's my plan anyway.
Okay, yeah, I saw it, Mr. Chief's plan, I just wanted to touch on this.
Yeah, yeah.
Like Eastside Community knows, they have yard, huh?
Exactly, it's, it's been a headache for a long time.
Yeah, school's been around, particularly those sections, they're around sixty-seven.
Happen sixty-seven, yeah.
Mr. Craig, you're shaking his head, that's great.
I thought he lay there. But yeah, that's my plan.
Okay, I appreciate it.
You laying?
Alright, thank you. Got a paper? Thank you, thank you. Alright, moving on to operations, of course. Alright, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first tonight, we are going to hear from our directors of teaching and learning, doctors, Kathy Bryant and Cole Crouch. Nicole handles pre-K through five and Kathy handles sixth through twelve, and they do a great job for us. I do want to make sure that I highlight for you, especially the board members, they put together training for our principals, our building leaders every month. It's called a teaching and learning meeting and they do a fantastic job preparing our principals for that. So they're going to talk to you a little bit about some of the fruit of some of those meetings last year and just give you an update about what's going on in teaching and learning. So ladies, take it away. Oh, hold on, there you go.
Thank you for this opportunity to come and read the spotlight. Tonight, we're going to talk about our district instructional leadership team and some of the things that we look at when we have our meetings. One of the things we get asked about all the time is assessments. So that's always a fun topic. Why do we take assessments that we take, what's required, what's not, why do we have to take something? So we thought we would give you a little backstory on them and tell you where we're at now and kind of go through our process of assessments. So I'll orient you to this slide. So on the left side, this was last year's suite of assessments. And everything that you see in blue, we, we have tried to streamline the number of assessments that we had in last year moving forward into this year, but we've been careful to maintain the types of assessments that are needed to support student learning. And so I also want you to make notice of the asterisks. So the asterisks in front of the assessments indicate that that is a state required assessment. Students have to take those assessments. Then if you notice the oval shape in front of some of the assessments, those are preparatory assessments to help students succeed on the state mandated assessments. So as Kathy showed you, we kind of try to streamline our assessments. That was one thing that Dr. Swallows mentioned we worked with in teaching and learning. You know, a lot of testing, testing fatigue for our kids. How can we streamline this to make it more efficient and still give us the data that we need to make the decisions that we need? So again, the first one, we kind of talked about, but we thought we would tell you what they do, what the purpose of them are. So Hineswell Plus is a screener that is required by the state. It is the state's official screener. And we use that right now for pre-K and third grade. IREDA, the next two, we have IREDA reading and IREDA math. And so in all of our other grades, we use that as our universal screener. And it also serves as a diagnostic for our kids and it also serves as a predictive assessment. Then we have a new one that we've not really talked about yet, is Mastery Connect. So in third grade through eighth, they take science and again, it's a, gives us a predictive assessment for them on how well they will perform on TCAP. And science testing starts in third grade. And then the same thing with social studies, except that only is given to sixth through eighth grade because they're the only ones tested at that TCAP. We have Pre ACT for our eighth through tenth graders. And as you probably already know, that is just a predictive and a practice test for our kids so they can get ready to take the ACT. We know how valuable and how important the ACT is for us. Eleventh and twelfth is required to take the ACT to graduate. And then we have our end of course assessments. And we use SchoolNet, which is a tool provided by the state of Tennessee to help give those, our kids in high school prep for their EO states. So they can take that kind of gauge how they'll do on their end of semester, end of course assessments. And then of course, the all five topics, a TCAP second through eighth, and then our EO states for our high school kids.
So Nicole mentioned predictive performance. And so predictive performance is projected performance data. And it's a tool that some assessments use to project a student's score and link a student's performance to give us our likelihood performance on the state assessment. So it gives us an indication of where we might have gaps in order to prepare those students for the state assessments. We can take those benchmarks along the way and identify students that need more assistance in certain areas or skills, procedures. So we, we use predictive assessments, they're like practice games before the championship. And we want to practice like we play.
So now that you know what they are, here are some of the things we do with them. As you read through the list, most of these have to do with instruction and supporting our kids. It can help, it can help teachers make instructional shifts based on the data that they see. It can also help us to plan enrichment things for the kids who are already succeeding where they're at. It can help us plan means of support for kids who need extra support in certain standards along the way. The third one, of course, is kind of what Kathy referenced, is their practice. We want them to be very familiar with what they're doing before they take the hospice test at the end of the year. So these practices are very much TCAP-like so that they can kind of be used to and maybe get the jitters out before it happens. And then the last one is important to schools and leaders mostly. So we can use this data to measure time, measure their growth over time. So we can do that at the student level, we can do it at the class level, the grade level, a school level, and even just across the district as a whole. So we use that a lot to gauge like what do we need to provide to help our teachers for kind of professional development and other things on that area.
So predictive assessments don't just focus on accountability. It's also a moment for us to determine learning and growth and help us to stay on track. So these assessments are designed to support students as they prepare for life back for high school. And the state standards are built around knowledge and skills that students need in college or trade school or workforce. And each assessment measures a different set of skills or competencies that they're going to need for after they graduate. So I know it still look like we had a long list of assessments, but all kids don't take all those assessments. So we thought we would give you a snapshot of what each kind of grade band takes. So Oliver is our example of a K through two student. So in kindergarten and first, you would only take the first three things. You would take your, your state mandated screener. Or we use IREDA now, it's also our group online. So we take that three times a year in the fall, winter, and then again in spring. And then once they're in second grade, they will take the TCAP. And then we have Jasmine, and she's our third grade student. And we know there's lots going on with our third grade students. And so you can tell she has a little bit more assessments on her plate as our K two students. So she still has the IREDA reading and math, fall, winter, and spring. She will also take the Master
She will also take the Mastery Connect science because science is tested in, on TCAP in third grade. And then, because part of the law is she will also have to take Ames Web reading three times a year. So the state only allows a student to be eligible for an appeal if they have an Ames Web reading score. So we have to do that for them so that if they meet the qualifications of an appeal, that we have everything we need to support that student to submit it on their behalf. And then of course, they'll take the end-of-year TCAP as well. And then we go to Oliver, I mean Carlos, and he's an example of our fourth and fifth grade student. You can tell his assessments go down a little bit after third grade, so he takes basically the same thing that our third grades take, except he does not have to take the Ames Web assessment, it's not required for fourth and fifth.
So Hannah's year of assessment, so much like fourth and fifth grade, um, Hannah will take the fall, winter, and spring I read benchmark diagnostic. She would also take the Mastery Connect science and social studies to help prepare her for the science and social studies TCAP at the end of the year. And then she takes TCAP for all of those subjects at the end of the year. So Mia's similar, very similar experience to sixth and seventh grade. In addition to those suite of assessments, uh, Mia would also take the pre-ACT. And it's, it is the eighth grade version of the pre-ACT, so it's a modified version. And so we, um, we give that assessment in order to start preparing them and see if there's any gaps, if we need to provide enrichment opportunities. Also, before they take that test, um, there is a career interest inventory so they can begin to, um, identify some of the career clusters that they might be interested in. And that's important because when they're going into the ninth grade, around this time of year, believe it or not, they already start deciding what kind of courses they want to take in high school. And so if they have that career interest inventory, they can identify what their focused area may be, which can always change to the eighth grader too, that's early. Um, so high school career, um, so this is the pinnacle and Keith's year of assessment. So high school is broken up into, um, two semesters, of course. So students are going to take, um, end-of-course assessments in Algebra I. Now they won't take the Algebra I assessment here at Warren County High School until the end of the year because that is a year-long course for us. They will take Algebra II, either fall or spring, whenever they have the course, English I, English II, and Biology and Geometry and U.S. History. And those all can occur anywhere from ninth to eleventh grade. In addition to that, our ninth graders and our tenth graders again take the pre-ACT that is designed for ninth and tenth graders. Uh, all students have to take the ACT as an eleventh grader in order to graduate. And then the students have the opportunity to choose to take the ACT again in twelfth grade in order to increase that score, and they get to take both of those for free. So in addition to those tests, uh, again, I mentioned that students choose a program of study throughout high school. So there could be some additional courses that they have to work in, such as, uh, AP courses for advanced placement, dual enrollment, industry certification, statewide dual enrollment, or local dual credit. So all of those assessments are helping prepare that student for life after high school.
So in closing, we kinda just found this quality, thought it was a good representative of this. Just as regular checkups keep us healthy, assessments give us valid information to strengthen learning, ensuring growth, progress, and long-term success. We hope that this presentation has helped you have a better understanding of what the kids take at different levels and the purpose behind them. We try really hard with our, working with our principals and our teachers and getting feedback and really trying to streamline them and be very purposeful and just using the information that we need.
All right, questions for our Directors of Teaching and Learning? I don't, I don't have a question, but I guess more of a comment, is, that was a lot. And, and I, I really wish that our legislators could have heard that. Because you start counting these assessment tests, and I'm wondering, how much time are we spending teaching? We're, we're spending so much time on trying to assess where a kid is. And I know that's out of, on home, you guys, but I, I really, it's just kinda overwhelming when you hear, uh, second or third graders doing eleven or twelve assessments in a year's time, and we're worried about where they're at instead of really focusing on teaching. And, and I think everybody would be perfectly fine with all this assessment if the success was bringing what we really would like to see our scores being, where we're a reading on grade level above the fifty percentile or other things, so, again, I, I really wish other people could hear this, what you guys just told us of all that's going on.
I, I kinda agree with you, Coach, I, I feel like that we're being tested too much. And, you know, I think going back and looking at it, and what you were saying, that what you're doing is putting them on path to graduate and help be cool in society. But I think that, that a lot of times, from the testing, it, a lot of them don't, they're, they're doing testing too much. And to me, it's, uh, really, it's to kinda derogatory to our teachers to tell them they need to be teaching something other than just teaching to the taste. And that's kinda what I agree with Coach about. If the legislature would ever sit behind a classroom death one day and teach certain kids, they might have a different attitude.
Is, on those Mastery Connect, the correlation, do we get like results on, how close are they to like, this group of kids that take this Mastery Connect, and then when they do the TCAP, are those scores usually pretty in line with that?
We did a point eight reliability.
Okay.
Point eight reliability.
I feel, I fear that we're teaching kids how to master a test and not how to learn. Because if we fail to teach them how to learn as they get older, these things become more difficult because all will simply do is, how can I meet the standard and go to the next? Instead of the love of learning, I guess you would say, uh, instead of learning how to learn on your own. Once you learn how to learn, you can learn anything. But we've almost conditioned them just to beat the test to move to the next step.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know, not gonna be on Ted's horse, uh, uh, I think most of us are interested in about the quantity of testing, uh, that's getting done. But, and I, I do believe that information is, uh, you know, since we are required to do the assessments, he's in that information in a positive way, of course, if necessary, and I appreciate what you're doing. Um, with that, how much, uh, if you could, um, just give me an idea of the testing is required. I know, uh, a lot of it's state required, how much are we doing in addition to state requirements?
To go back to, yeah, that's, um...
I was trying to take notes, is the word?
It is a lot, yeah, yeah.
So then, you know, if we can help ourselves out, well, I mean, because, uh, kinda like, kinda combination what they're saying, I do believe that, you know, teaching like, uh, uh, Charles was saying, you know, teaching our kids to learn or to be critical thinkers as opposed to, um, learning to take a test, you know, be good test takers, and I do believe that's important, uh, to, you know, to teach our kids how to think and how to learn.
So I will take that from you for a second.
Thank you.
I, I want to make sure you understand, had we done this presentation last year, that slide would have been, had, there would have been many more on that. Because there were, there were things that we were doing in the district, um, because we felt like we needed that information. And as they made the point, predictive assessments and all that come with that. Uh, so this is very streamlined compared to what we've done even in the past. Um, but I would also say that it reflects, especially with Mastery Connect, a lot of the things that we were hearing from schools, uh, you know, we do feel like we're testing a lot, but we are afraid to give up some of that because it does give us data that we really need in the classroom to be able to understand where the kid is to where we can respond in kind and, and instruction. So, uh, Mastery Connect is not something that's required, you can see that, that's something that we choose to do. The pre-ACT is not something that's required, but we're not ready to, to abandon those as of yet because we, we see the value locally to that. And so understand though, too, we don't think it's taking that much time out of the classroom day because we can streamline these and try to get through them as quickly as we can. So I think it's gonna continue to be a question we have, of what's, what's worth the time to do it. And, uh, this, this list that you're seeing has, uh, been a, been a long, hard process to get to thus far. And I appreciate the fact that they, they brought that before you, because as a parent, we've got some parents and, uh, you, you, you hear about a lot of different information that comes on, I read, and you've heard that, I know you've heard that. I read Mastery Connect, all kinds of things that come home, and so, uh, they've done a great job of explaining to you why we do those.
I, I agree with Dr. Swallows right there, you know, five years on the board, this is the best illustration that they, that explained the best that I, that I set under, uh, set under, but, you know, I, I, as a parent of a fourth grader, I, I, I fear that we create testing anxiety, unnecessary testing anxiety sometimes, you know, and, and kids are put in, you know, certain categories because of a certain test score. Now granted, there's some, a lot of those kids need some extra help, and that's a good indicator. If they're having trouble on that test and they're having, you know, you know, maybe that extra tutoring, and that's, you know, I, I can completely understand that and relate to that one, but, you know, and, and this is, I'm not meaning to go down this rabbit hole, but, you know, it's all, it's all schools that are receiving state funding doing this much testing, and I'll leave it at that.
Well, they're doing all the asterisks, they're doing all the required, which is majority probably is, so...
Again, I'll take that from you. He, uh, that's not necessarily the case. Now, all those that are now receiving state funding, uh, some do not take any of those assessments. Thank you. Other, other questions? Well, ladies, thank you for a lot of great information. I will point out to you, Kathy put this in the slide here, I think, and, uh, those are our schools with some new logos. And Sarah Cantrell, who's here, has helped organize that, uh, to get our schools' logos updated. And, uh, so we'll be releasing those here shortly, but you can see we brought them up. We've updated them and given them all a custom logo, and, uh, she has contracted with one, uh, with Zedrite Pogler, uh, to give each school a, a fresh, updated logo, so we'll be using those soon. So that's, has nothing to do with teaching and learning, but, uh, wanted you to say that. All right, next thing, uh, on the operations report, you have in front of you a budget amendment, uh, that's going to be, I'll pull that up for you here. This is General Purpose Fund 141 Amendment Three, and so I wanna explain that to you and ask you for your consideration and approval tonight. Uh, two of our schools have received a TBA grant, uh, in the amount of ten thousand dollars. And so we're receiving that grant, uh, through 141, forty-six, eight fifty-one. Uh, we're taking in that twenty thousand dollars as well as we've received a, another grant from the state of Tennessee for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand uh, that will be going out for our teletherapy services that we're offering to our schools, uh, to our students in school. And the benefit there, there's several of those benefits, but one of the things that we like is that we're able to offer therapy services to our students. They don't even have to leave school, uh, it's, it's virtual teletherapy there online with a psychiatrist, and they don't even have to leave the school building and can go right back in the school day. So, uh, we're able to continue those services through receiving this grant. So we're taking a hundred and ninety-nine thousand out of those two lines and putting them in the lines that they need to be in. Uh, the maintenance of plants, there'll be sixteen thousand moved, uh, so that we construct some out, uh, can, can construct some outdoor classrooms. Uh, three thousand nine hundred thirty-three dollars will go toward furniture for those outdoor classrooms. And then the health services, uh, will go toward, uh, the contracted services that we have for teletherapy. So I will submit that to the board for your approval and a budget amendment tonight. All right, can I get a motion to amend, uh, GP 141 Budget Amendment Number Three? Motion, Mr. Chairman. Got a motion by Mr. Bryant, second motion by Mr. Colwell, any discussion over this, or all in favor, say aye.
Have no.
Any, uh, any opposed, or motion carries? All right, next item of business is, uh, another budget amendment, uh, GP Schools Budget Amendment Number Four. Uh, this is, uh, in terms of the budget amendments we bring to you, probably just one of the smaller ones that we bring. Uh, but our pre-K teachers were needing to have, uh, were mandated to have a professional development day, and we don't normally budget for that, and so we're asking for you to take one thousand six hundred fifty dollars out of line five ninety-nine, that's other charges, and move that into line five twenty-four for in-service slash staff development. Again, one thousand six hundred fifty dollars just, uh, total for that pre-K period. All right, can I get a motion to approve the Budget Amendment Number Four from General Purpose Budget 141?
Motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Judson?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Brown, any discussion over this, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, or motion carries? All right, next item of business on your agenda is nine D. Uh, this is a request for approval of tenure. Uh, this comes from Warren County High School, Ms. Linda Paris, uh, is one of our culinary teachers. Uh, if you happen to catch the, uh, food truck out anywhere, which they were in, uh, our office today. And, uh, Ms. Paris is in charge of that, does a great job for us. Uh, she has, um, moved to us and, uh, from another district, and so we are behind in granting her tenure. So, uh, Mr. Hobbs sent that letter, and we're passing it to you for granting of tenure for Ms. Paris. All right, can I get a motion for, request for approval of tenure for Linda Paris?
Motion.
A motion by Mr. Scobell, second by Mr. Johnson, any discussion over this, or all in favor, say aye.
Uh, no, opposed.
All right, motion carries. All right, item nine E is something we've already made reference to tonight, is the Maintenance Strategic Plan. You should have a copy of that in your packet of information, I'll briefly go over that. And if you've got questions, David's here to answer those as well. Uh, just so that you know, we try to put together a five-year plan each year, um, and try to put some items that are important to you, important to our schools, things that we always know that our schools are gonna be in need of upgrades or fixes. Uh, understand that this is a strategic plan because tomorrow, uh, at Eastside, as I look at Mr. Crabtree, the roof may fall in, and if that happens, heaven forbid, uh, we're gonna probably have to move some of these things around. But ultimately, uh, I, I've, I've enjoyed over the last couple of years bringing to you a five-year plan that because of our extra money, uh, one year, we were able to wipe out all five years of the projects that we were, had on the five-year plan uh, because of the extra funding that we have. But, uh, again, understand that this is a plan, twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, one of the discussions was the restaurant upgrades at, at Eastside, uh, a new roof on the old part of Duro Elementary. Mr. Northcutt talked about the paving of the access road at Morrison. Uh, Bobby Ray needs, uh, quite a bit of parking lot repairs and striping, uh, Center Town bleacher upgrades, uh, West awning replacement. Uh, Pavilion is already underway, uh, at, at West. Uh, the fence upgrades again that, uh, Mr. Northcutt has talked about. Dibrel is in need of a head unit for their intercom. Uh, and, and the teacher, and the teacher parking lot at the high school, if you've been in there lately, uh, you can drive around some fun potlows. So, uh, trying to take care of that, the ceiling and striping. So I won't go through all five years of this plan, but, uh, let me look through that, have you to answer any questions. We'd like to, uh, submit this for your approval, uh, tonight, or for your consideration and approval tonight.
They listed it in priority.
So, really, I, I, I think if it's on the list, they're gonna definitely try to do it. Uh, it's not necessarily a priority, it's, it's just, it's most likely what's come to him first, if I don't put words in them out, but that's my guess. I'll go ahead and get a motion, second, we'll have a discussion over this. Can I get a motion for, for, uh, making this talk here for page?
So, uh...
Got a motion by Mr. Judson, second, by Mr. Bennett. All right, any discussion over this, some time to go over it before...
I do have a question on pages three, five, and six. Uh, it makes mention the high school roof section being repaired, repaired. Is it three different sections, or is it just listed three times?
Well, the, the price of that is...
Well, the, the price of that is, is so high and expensive that, I mean, I get nine hundred thousand a year and I, I can't do it all at one time.
Mr. Johnson, just to, just to tell you, we have a, uh, we have a quote right now for two point one million.
Is that right?
So, and that's for the full triangle, that I like to say, um, and so...
That's for all the singles.
So you're just saying like divided by three?
Yeah, just, yeah.
I just want to make sure, just want the same thing the end three times.
No, it's not the same boy.
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure.
One of the issues, Mr. Johnson, well, actually for everybody, uh, is, uh, we're, we're getting closer to bringing you, uh, an approved, um, plan for the cafeteria expansion, so that's also going to play into the roof because you don't want to have a different looking roof on the expansion, so we'll talk to you then.
Now, good, what is the camera upgrades for Hurst College at two hundred, two hundred thousand?
It, it's actually a whole new camera system. Uh, we are moving into a camera system, a surveillance camera for, for, uh, facial recognition and, and things like that, which is pretty high-tech. We, we done one at the high school, uh, last year and it was like three hundred fifty thousand.
I, I could probably speak on this a little bit because we haven't been working on the old school as well.
Yes, we've done a bit of it.
And essentially what it has the capability of doing, if I highlight someone that comes in, in the auditorium, I can trace them to the entire building every time they occur on the camera, uh, the, the visuals were much better and so I think we're trying to get this for every school.
Yes.
And so it's, it's...
Look, I appreciate it, I was kind of surprised with self camera.
It's just a work in progress, yeah.
And I would add that we absolutely hate that we have to have that, but that's the way it is really.
All right, any more discussion over this before we take a vote?
I do want to just add again, this, this is a strategic plan, it is not in stone, but we will update you every year on this plan.
I want to thank David for the work putting this together, I know it's not easy because I know you can make this list ten miles long and everybody wants it tomorrow and, but I think you do a really good job of, of working with what funds you have. I know it's not, you know, it's not a lot, but, uh, you do a good job of getting this together for us, so thank you for that. All right, any more discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that's it for me for operations.
All right, operations for, for some achievement?
We have none.
We have none, all right. So we'll move on to, uh, other business. Uh, this, each year we do a board reorganization, uh, for chairman and vice chair, uh, and at the, at this time, I will take nominations for chairman of the board.
Mr. Chairman, Chris Coe, I'd like to nominate Mr. Johnson as chairman.
All right, we have a nomination for Mr. Jarvis Johnson for chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Chris Coe as chairman of the board for a year.
All right, we have a nomination for Mr. Coe. Is there any more nominations before we close nominations? All right, we have two nominations for chairman of the board and as chairman, since my name is mentioned in this, I'm going to turn this vote over to our secretary, who is Dr. Swallows tonight.
Okay, um, sorry, um, usually Damon's here to do this, so, uh, and Deidre's doing a great job, but I'm going to do it for her since this is her first meeting doing that, so, all right, so, um, we have two nominations on the, on, on the board, so what we will do is, uh, take a ballot vote, so what I, what, what I do, what I need to say is that it has to be a majority of the board, so whoever receives four votes has to receive four votes, uh, in order to be for the chair. So we'll, what we'll do is take a, I'll ask you to raise your hand for who you're voting for, uh, and then we'll, after, at the conclusion of that, if there is a person that receives four votes, what the board will need to do is, um, make a motion for that person to come chair. All right.
Dr. Swallows?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I know Mr. Coe's done a good job the past two years, but I feel like it needs to be passed on to, uh, we got two new board members on here who have no experience as chairman or vice chair, they represent the district of constituents and, uh, you know, I feel like that, uh, they, they need to be, uh, in my opinion, they need to be the chairman and the vice chair next year and I know we haven't even talked about the vice chair, uh, I just, they need to have that experience. I'll lay everybody on this board right now that's had that experience and I, you know, I don't have anything against Mr. Coe, he's doing, I'd say that he's doing a good job, but I just think it needs to be passed around.
Okay. Any other, anything else that I had before we vote? Okay, so what I'll ask you to do is I will read off the first nomination, uh, and ask you to raise your right hand if you're voting for that person, so...
I do have a question, I'm, I'm accusing myself of voting as well because I own that list, I just want to be clear about that.
Okay.
Can't vote for myself.
I would, okay. I just want to, I appreciate what you're saying, I will just say it has to be four votes, right, so even if you recuse yourself, it has to be a four vote, it has to be a four vote majority, all right, so... All hands ready? All right, uh, so if you're voting for Jarvis Johnson, raise your right hand. Okay, got one vote for Mr. Johnson, all right. Uh, voted for Mr. Coe, raise your right hand. Okay. All right, so, uh, Mr. Coe receives four votes, uh, Jarvis Johnson receives one vote, so, again, from the board's perspective, I would believe that we need to make a nomination now and second for Mr. Coe to come chair.
I thought Mr. Coe excused himself from voting.
I did not, no.
Okay, I think just from the procedural side of it.
Okay. So, is anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to elect a purpose chairperson, so, uh, we'll do this also by raising the right hand, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Okay. Deidre, you got that recorded?
I still think it's, I still think it needs to be passed around. I don't have anything against Chris, but here we have two brand new people on the board and so I, I just don't think it's fair of these guys right here.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you for vice chair.
All right, at this time, we will take nominations for vice chair.
I'll nominate Mr. Brown for vice chair.
Got a nomination for Mr. Brown?
A second.
We got any other nominations for vice chair this time? All right, no more nominations, so we'll take a vote on that, it's all in favor, raise your right hand, Matthew Brown is the vice chair. All right, I will make the motion that Matthew Brown is the vice chair. Get a second on that?
Second.
Got a second, Mr. Colwell, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right.
Adding to what Mr. Bennett said, uh, was always next year, you know...
Well, you could say it's next year and next year and next year. We've been through this before on many board meetings and it's been somebody put it year after year after year, but we've been in a cycle where we're the person, we've been in a cycle on this board where the person that had the chair would last two years, for two years, and then we could pass it on to the vice chair the next time. That's what I don't understand, before the season started, before the season started, we used to have a board where there was a chair this year, the, the vice chair would move up to next year and we, and then later in advance, you know, a new vice chair. That's my point I'm trying to make, we're not consistent in what we're doing. We started out with two, we started out with one year and then we've gone, went to two years and then we went to two years again on the next one and then here we are, going back, we're going back the way, we're not transparent, that's what I'm trying to say.
I, I would add that, that, of course, your chairman, uh, Mr. Judkins was vice chair and he was not nominated even for chair or vice chair the following year, so...
I understand that, but I didn't have a problem with it. But they just, I just think that, like I said, these, these two, they're two brand new people on the board, they, how are they going to get experience if they're never elected to that position? They represent constituents, constituents in this county just like we ought to and they, the people that let them want to see them in, in a position where they're speaking, where they're represented.
So, I, I'm coming as one of the new board members, I'm looking at it as, my vote counts just the same as anybody else's up here on the board.
I understand.
And I appreciate looking at the experience, uh, but I'm also looking at it, I appreciate the time that I've seen since I've been on the board that, uh, Mr. Coe has, you know, the time availability he has and the time he's put into it and I think he's going to find you out and...
That's true, I agree.
You know, uh, perhaps after, I would, I would prefer, for me personally, I would like to wait, you know, a couple of years before moving into the chair position, that is my personal viewpoint.
I understand, I understand what you're saying, Chris done a good job and I've come in before and he's had it for two years, but you're not, Mr. Johnson's not going to get any experience and, you know, and you, if you're going to sit here, you know, two more years, I don't, I just don't buy it, I don't buy it. I'm sorry, but I don't, I don't have anything personally against Chris, I come in and he's done a good job, but I just think it needs to be, I just think that, that, I just think that Jarvis needed to be moved up as a chairman and I think he needed to be the vice chair. That's my personal opinion, but, and it doesn't count for nothing, I can tell already.
All right, at this point, at this time, we'll appoint a legislative liaison, we'll do that annually as well and I think Mr. Brown was appointed to that last year, but, uh, we got any nominations for legislative liaison?
Uh, nominate Mr. Brown again.
All right, we got a nomination, Mr. Brown, any other nominations for legislative liaison? All right, we'll, I guess that's not voted on.
Can we just make a motion that the nomination ceases?
I'll make a motion that the nomination ceases and that Matt Brown will be appointed for legislative liaison.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we will adopt the Board Code of Ethics that is in your packet, um, this is something we do every year, um, and it is not changing. Uh, I will ask for a motion to accept, uh, to adopt the Board of, Board Code of Ethics, that's policy one point four zero six, one point one zero seven, one point two zero two one. I'll make, I'll make a motion to adopt the Board Code of Ethics.
Second.
Got a second, Mr. Judkins, any discussion over this? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Our motion carries. And this time we'll appoint the Ethics Committee, I think what we have normally done in the past, that's been the chair and the vice chair that's served on the Ethics Committee, as you as a non-voting member will sit in on that as well, so I will make the motion that we appoint the chairman and vice chair to the Ethics Committee. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Got a second, Mr. Brown, any questions over that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our motion carries. Do we have any, uh, other, um, business that we need to talk about before we adjourn? The next school board meeting will be Thursday, October twenty-third. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'd like a motion.
Got a motion, Mr. Judkins, you got a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Making is adjourned.